Call to order and roll call, please.
Chair Fredrickson.
Here.
Vice Chair Shores.
Here.
Commissioner DeVries.
Here.
Commissioner Goss.
Here.
Commissioner Keith.
Here.
Commissioner Kress.
Here.
Commissioner McCoy.
Here.
We have a forum.
Lori, would you please lead us in the platte allegiance tonight?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number one, approval of minutes. Approval of minutes. Review and approval of minute of approval of March 12th, 2019, regular meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I got a motion and second. Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Alrighty. Consideration of public comments. Those wishing to address the Planning and Zoning Commission need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time pursuant to ARS 38-431. Wes, I'm gonna call on you on this one for the public comment. I'm assuming that's...
Commissioners, I would like to bring to your attention, as you drive through town, there are vehicles for sale everywhere on lots, and, I mean, it just, they're everywhere now. I would like to bring to your attention the city of Thousand Oaks, California. Did it, and what they did is they actually have an area about an acre or something like that set aside so that citizens could bring their vehicles to one location and have their for-sale signs and stuff like that. And so it's not on every street corner or parking lot of, you know, the different businesses around town. And I would like to see if you would look into that to see if Kingman can come up with a place where people would sell their cars and not have them all over. It looks kinda junky as you're driving through town. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wes.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Any further comments from the public? Alright, I see none, closed. Item number three, reports. Hey, welcome new Commissioner member Vicki Kress.
Welcome. Thank you very much. It's nice to be here.
You look just like a city councilman, don't you?
Not anymore.
Planning and zoning commissioner, she looks like now.
Yep.
Alrighty. Item B, past council action. Conventional use permit case CUP 19-001. Richard?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, there were two items that went before the council in April. We didn't get to report on them because we didn't have a meeting in April here. But the first one was CUP 19001. That is the AAA Mobile Home Park CUP to allow the park mile homes within the park. And that was approved by the council. And the other one was for the mini storages on Andy Devine. It was extension of time and allowance for caretakers' residents. And that was also approved by council.
Alrighty. Thank you, Richard. Old business. There is no old business to discuss. Item number five, new business. A abandonment case AB19-0004. Event abandonment case AB19-0004. A request from Mojave Engineering Associates, applicant and William L. Nugent, adjoining property owner, for approval of the vacation abandonment of parcel D of Wallack Ranch, tract 1961-B. The parcel was granted to the city of Kingman for the drainage purposes, the placement of a sewer line, and a sewer lift station. The parcel is approximately 10,611 square feet and is located to adjacent to Mojave Wash, west of North Willow Road and east of Wallack Ranch Drive. Richard?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, this is an abandonment case AB19-004. It involves parcel D of Wallack Ranch, tract 1961-B. The applicant is William L. Nugent and the agent for the applicant is Mojave Engineering Associates. My request is to vacate parcel D. It's located adjacent to the Mojave Wash, west of North Willow Road and east of Wallack Ranch Drive. It's about 10,600 acres, I'm sorry, square feet in size. This is a subdivision map which shows the location of the parcel. The subdivision that surrounds it is actually approved but not recorded yet. But the parcel itself was recorded with the recording of parcel of tract 1961-B back in 1998, I believe it was. We have a few photos of the site, including the, this from a distance from North Willow Road. There is a sewer lift station on the property, and there's a few close-up views of the sewer lift station. So the surrounding property is zoned R16. The general plan projected land use is medium-density residential, three to eight units per acre, except for Mojave Wash, which is designated as parks and open space. Zoning development history, the area was annexed in 1977. The preliminary plat for Wallack Ranch, 1961, was approved initially in 1997 with the R16 zoning applied. The final plat for 1961-B was recorded in 1998. As I said, that was when parcel D was dedicated to the city. The preliminary plat for Wallack Ranch was extended several times, last time in 2004. And then the phase that is surrounding the site was approved last year. Improvements are underway, and the final plat will be recorded after the completion and acceptance of those improvements. Site itself is generally flat, slight, slipping slightly to the southeast toward Mojave Wash. Property is in flood zone X, which is between the base flood and 500-year floodplain, but the wash itself is a designated flood zone. Within parcel D, there is a 10-inch sewer main and a 6-inch sewer force main and a sewer lift station. However, the lift station and sewer force main are no longer in operation. Property has access from a 25-foot wide PUE and enigris egress easement from North Willow Road. There will be a new street there. That will be dedicated with the recording of Wallack Ranch, 1961-J. That will provide access to parcel D. So this is an aerial map of the site showing existing sewer line that goes through the parcel and surrounding site just west of North Willow Road. We posted the site in two places on April 26th. We published notice in the minor on April 28th. There were only four notices sent out with two owners within 300 feet. No public comments were received. There were no comments or objections received from the fire department, Frontier Communications, or Mojave County Flood Control. Both photography and the city engineer did comment on the proposal, and that those comments are in the report. So parcel D was granted to the city of Kingman for drainage purposes and sewer, and a sewer line and a sewer lift station with Wallack Ranch, tract 1961-B. As I mentioned, the sewer force main and lift station are longer in service, but there is an active 10-inch sewer main in the parcel. Parcel D falls within the definition of a right-of-way in the street policy, and the policy also states that public right-of-way containing existing utilities should not be eligible to be abandoned. However, the city engineer did comment that the city needs a minimum 30 feet with 15 feet on each side of the sewer line for maintenance and operations. Parcel D is about 56 feet wide right now, and so it's possible that areas that are beyond the 15-foot limit on either side of the line could be considered for vacation. If this were done, the exact location would have to be established with a survey of the site, and a legal description would be, would need to be prepared. The city did spend $676,000 to install a new sewer line, making lift station no longer necessary. However, it has not yet been abandoned. There is a contract to do so, but it does not include removing the concrete wet well. So the recommendation is that if the entire lift station is to be, or the entire, if the parcel would be partially abandoned, that the entire lift station be removed to avoid any future construction issues on the adjoining residential properties. The city engineer disputed to the applicant in regards to this, and appears that this may be possible to be part of the city's contract pending council approval. Also, within the street policy, as well as state statutes, require whenever a property is vacated, that the vacation be subject to a payment based upon the property value, which is based on the fragmentation marketability and any public benefit associated with that parcel. The applicant has not given us a specific amount at this point. An alternative to, to the, going through the abandoned process is actually do a property exchange. That can be done if the properties are substantially equal value. The applicant does own nearby parcel that's about 9,500 square feet in size, which is slightly smaller than parcel D. A part of the concrete pathway that goes along Mojave Wash actually goes through his parcel. So possibly this parcel, parcel could be considered for, to be exchanged in, for portions of parcel D rather than requiring compensation. This map shows the location of parcel B and the lift station. You can see the sewer, sewer main that goes through the parcel right now currently. And then on the east side of Willow Road, in the red box, is the parcel that is owned by Mr. Nugent that would be possibly subject for exchange. And you can see part of the concrete pathway goes through that parcel, so it may be a reason for the city to acquire that property. We already own the parcels directly north of that where the pathway is and then where the wash is located. So staff is recommending retaining a minimum 30 feet of parcel D with at least 15 feet on each side of the 10-inch sewer main, allowing the remainder of the parcel to either be vacated, which would follow the street policy, or exchanged for the parcel owned by Mr. Nugent per the ARS statutes with the following conditions. A survey would have to be done and established, the location of the sewer main and legal, a legal description of the parcel would have to be prepared as well by the applicant. The applicant is responsible to remove the lift station in its entirety prior to the residential construction occurring on the property, and then subject to council approval. The city may participate with the lift station removal based upon its current contract. Then finally, see if instead of doing the exchange that the property is actually vacated, then we would recommend that the applicant, applicant offer an amount that is commensurate with the value of the portions of D that would be vacated. And that's in accordance with section 50, 5-1 for the street policy. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Go ahead. I've got a couple of questions.
Sure.
How long ago was the lift station no longer needed? You said recently. How long ago?
I'm not sure offhand. I don't know. Greg, do you know when that was?
Just in the last two months.
Okay. And is the city's plan ultimately to take the lift station out and leave the wet well?
That's the, yes. They're not planning on removing the well.
What's the cost of removing the lift station?
This is Greg's area of expertise, so.
Evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. So we have a contract now with Friday Construction to abandon the lift station in place. And basically, it would be just, there's a concrete wet well that goes down in the ground about 20 feet. They would go down to the bottom of that, first vacuum it out, disinfect it, punch the bottom out and backfill it with sands, very similar to what is done when a septic tank is abandoned. But since it wasn't anticipated that this property would be abandoned when we obtained this contract with Friday Construction, and that it would remain city property for all eternity, we saw no need to pull it out in its entirety. I don't know the exact cost, what it would be to pull it out in its entirety, but FUD Friday told me it would cost more than the contract amount we have now, which is $4,950.
Okay.
So.
Alright.
Can you answer the questions?
Um, I do. I mean, there's a lot of unknowns.
If we were to, if we were to exchange, what, I mean, I don't, I don't see much in the parcel for exchange, but is it beneficial to the city if we were to exchange?
Yeah, you're talking about the parcel on the east side of Willow there. Yeah. So a little bit of the pathway was built across that parcel, and then there's some Just to the north of Glen Haven Way, there's a drainage parcel there that, and you can see, there's kind of some, some vegetation there on the map. So there's, there's drainage that crosses that parcel, and then the western part of it has the pathway along the channel there. So that, there is a benefit to the city to obtain that, in my opinion.
Yeah, so, so the purpose of this, I mean, the purpose of this is for what? I mean, my question is, was like, because they're developing the whole, they're gonna, they're developing the whole thing, right?
So they're developing the Wallack Ranch subdivision?
The next phase or whatever, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So what, so why would the city pay for anything? I mean, because it says here, when I'm looking here, what I'm just questioning is that, it said the participant would, or the applicant, appears there, there could be an opportunity for the applicant to participate with the removal of the lift station. What does that mean? I mean.
So.
Part, I mean, you know.
So the concern is, if, if that parcel D is narrowed down from 56 feet to 30 feet, that wet well sits on kind of the north side of the parcel, which would potentially put that in somebody's backyard in the future. So we don't want to have, you know, a wet well, or a resident coming to the city at some point when they're trying to dig the fence or swimming pool or something else in their backyard, say, what is this wet well doing in our yard? So that's the reason we asked for the condition to remove it, remove it in its entirety if this abandonment were to take place. You know, the reason the applicant, my understanding is the applicant wants to just make the, the side, yards a little bigger on each side of the drain, the parcel there. So that's the reason he has come to the city and asked for this, in my, I believe, so.
I guess I'm just saying, like, there, the cost incurred is this, would all be on the applicant, correct?
Well, so, since the city has a current con, we have a budget and a current contract to abandon that lift station in place. It seemed reasonable that if the applicant were to now have to remove it in its entirety and pay perhaps, I don't know, maybe double that, then we still had that budget that we were planning to expend anyway, to abandon, ban it in place, so.
Okay. And then how would that, would that affect? I know that, I know that in, over on Robert Mitchum, some residents have talked about how there's been some soil and settlement problems, settling and stuff, and would that affect these homes?
Well, that's a whole, that's entirely, entirely different issue, but there, yeah, there has been some issue with clay soils there that kind of expand and shrink. So, but the, if the, if the wet well is removed in its entirety, we would ensure that they backfill that with some suitable material that would not cause somebody some problems later on, which could cause the city some problems later on, so.
I have a question. The initial cost of putting in that system there, the city paid $600,000 to have that put in place. Is that correct, Rich?
$675,000 or something.
$675,000 to have that installed, right?
I think, I think, are you referring to the, the cost of the new sewer line?
Uh huh. I'm talking the cost of having that placed on this parcel.
The lift station?
Mm-hmm.
Been there quite a long time. I don't know how much that costs.
It doesn't even affect the new sewer system anymore, right? The new sewer system that we have, this isn't needed, correct?
That's correct.
That's why, that's why it's being abandoned to begin with.
The subdivider installed the lift station at his entire cost, I think with phase B of the subdivision. He's developing phase J now. That lift station was, it met the standards at the time, but it didn't have backup power, and so it had been problematic for the city. And so the ci, that's why the city, we had to extend the 10-inch sewer main from the lift station all the way up to Cervevist Avenue and Bank Street, so, following the wash alignment. So it was, it was a fairly lengthy extension, and it, it cost $676,000 to do that, so.
Any further questions? Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to open it up to the public. Any, any comments on the public on this? I see Wes. Please state your name.
My name is Wes Maroney, and I've been listening to this. If this lift station has been sitting there abandoned, it needs to go. And I think trading is a better deal for the city, so there's no money involved, and so we don't lose any taxes or anything like that. And I would say that we should split the deal with the owner. The, the city, it's theirs and everything, so split the deal, half and half, and, and abandon it so that it's not a danger to the public or children or anybody else that is in the area. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from the public? I see none, closed. Alright, open it up for discussion.
I have a, I have a environmental question, and maybe Greg can answer this. If you don't remove it, the long-term environmental, what are the risks?
So if we, if we don't remove it, we would, we would essentially punch out.
Plut it, right.
Up the bottom, yeah, and, and backfill it with, well, disinfect it first, and then use our wastewater superintendent's vacuum truck to, to get all that water out of there. Punch the bottom out and then backfill it with sand. So there's, there's really no environmental effects. It's very similar to what is done when a septic tank is abandoned.
Okay. Alright.
But yeah, we wouldn't, we, we would, we would want to punch the bottom out, so we wouldn't get stagnant water that might sit in that wet well for any length of time.
Okay. Right. Thanks, Greg.
I'm ready to make a motion. I move to approve with recommendations A through C.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? Rule call vote, please.
Commissioner DeVries?
Approve.
Approve.
Approve. Denied.
Aye.
Aye.
So the motion carries.
Thank you, Sandy. Alright, item B, abandonment case AB19-0005. A request from Renee Grigg, applicant and adjacent property owner, for approval of the vacation abandonment of parcel K of Kingman Camelback, Unit 1, tract 1106. The parcel was granted to the city of Kingman for drainage purposes and overhead utilities. The parcel is approximately 7,500 square feet and is located between lots 8 and 9 of block 10, Kingman Camelback, Unit 1, tract 1106, on the west side of Christie Plaza. Sylvia?
Okay, so as you mentioned, this request is from Renee Grigg, the applicant and adjacent property owner. Parcel K is approximately 7,530 square feet and is located between lots 8 and 9 of block 10, Kingman Camelback, Unit 1, on the west side of Christie Plaza. The final plat for Kingman Camelback, Unit 1, tract 1106, was recorded in 1979, and parcel K was dedicated to Mojave County for drainage and overhead utility purposes. Then this area was annexed into the city of Kingman in 1991. The purpose of this request is the applicant has been maintaining this parcel for years and would like to purchase it and continue to maintain it. The applicant didn't realize that this portion of the property was owned by the city and improved this parcel with landscaping rock. Here's the original subdivision that was recorded, and it shows where parcel K is located. The requesting property owner resides here. Okay, so the surrounding land use is mainly R120 and R140. The general plan land use designation for this area is low-density residential, one to two units per acre. And again, here's the location of the parcel in between those two yellow lots. Generally, the subject site slopes to the southeast. The property lies within a flood zone X. There are no utilities in parcel K. There is a recorded 30-foot wide parcel that's labeled parcel J that is designated for drainage purposes and overhead utility crossings to the rear of parcel K. Parcel J can be accessed from Jagerson Avenue, and then parcel K can be accessed from Christie Plaza. And just to expand on that a little more, so in the back here is a parcel J that's 30 feet wide, and then this parcel can also be accessed from Christie Plaza right here. Okay, and here's another aerial of the property that shows where this drainage parcel is and also where that other parcel J drainage parcel is. This is the applicant's property right here. Here's a photo that was taken of the site. This is basically an estimated area of where the 30-foot parcel is, and so as you can see, it's pretty much landscaped already at this point. The site was posted and also published in the newspaper in April. There were 13 surrounding property owners within 300 feet of the subject property that were sent a notice of this hearing. John and Janice Mayer of 566 Christie Plaza came into the office to seek clarification on how this abandonment would affect them. Appeared to me after this meeting that they had no objection at that point. The city engineer did state that the safest strategy was to ensure that the drainage and utilities are not affected, was to keep the parcel K as city-owned. Otherwise, if this request is granted, there will need to be a provision for reserving both the utility easement as well as the drainage easement over the entire parcel. Public Works was not overly opposed, but did have a similar concern of how it would affect future development by the adjacent property owner and maintenance of the subject property. Sutton Link was similar, that they had no objection, but they would prefer to have a public utility easement that remains. Here's a brief analysis saying that section 5.1 of the street and sidewalk regulations governs the procedures for the vacation of right-of-way and extinguishment of easements. Parcel K is considered a right-of-way, which makes the request to vacate eligible. This, another section of the same regulations state that public right-of-ways or right-of-way easements containing existing utilities, including sewers, shall not be eligible for vacation. This parcel doesn't have utilities in it. It could, can be considered for a vacation. Section 5.14 states that if the vacation of the right-of-way is approved by the city of, by city council, any resolution of vacation shall be subject to the beginning of consideration by the owner of the abutting property and amount deemed by the common council to to be commensurate with the value of the right-of-way. Uh, the only adjacent property owner that showed interest in this property is Renee Gregg, the applicant. Uh, meeting, as I mentioned before, was held with the neighbors, and at that time it did not appear they were interested in any portion of this parcel. The applicant did submit an appraisal from Taylor Ross and Associates, which determined the value of the property to be sixty-four hundred based on the sales comparison approach. If approved, council would accept this amount from the applicant for parcel K. Uh, recommendations, the Planning and Zoning Commission may choose, uh, to approve or deny this request. Uh, decision options are to recommend approval to request, approval of the request to vacate parcel K with the condition that a drainage easement and overhead you, public utility easement be recorded in its place along with the payment of sixty-four hundred and recordation of a deed. The title to, uh, would pass to the city, or part, no, actually, the title of parcel K would pass to the applicant at that point. Or recommend denial of the request to vacate this parcel. And I know the applicant is present, if you have any questions, and if you have questions for me as well.
Any questions, Sylvia?
I've got a question. Um, it's not really a recommendation when you, um, have put it like this.
I'm sorry.
Do you not really have a recommendation whether this should be approved or denied?
Uh, we, well, it, uh, how, how would we put it? Um, there is a statement that, um, how do I put it over here? So, we have where the, um, city has said that the safest measure would be to keep the parcel.
Mm-hmm.
However, if the parcel is abandoned, that we recommend easement be put in its place. So that really is the recommendation.
Thank you.
Can you put the photo down?
This one, okay.
Has it, has it ever been used as a drainage parcel? Does it, does it actually convey water from north to south, east to west?
I have officially seen this, so yeah, I would have to ask either the applicant or, um, Greg at this point, how this has functioned. You can come up here and state your name over here.
Step up to the microphone, ma'am, please, and state your name.
Hi, my name's Renee Gregg. Um, the water does come from the back and it does run there. And I think the river rock, I don't think I noticed, that the river rock does slow down the flow of water into my neighbor Anne Marie Hayden's yard, she's right here. So I maintain that parcel since I've lived there, I didn't know it belonged to the city. Um, I have some trees in the backyard and some grass, and I've always maintained it. Um, I don't see any raging rivers or anything of that nature. Um, I'd be happy to maintain it and, um, it'd be an easement, I'm, I'm happy with that. I would just love to own it and it can, it can be an easement, I'm fine with that.
So you would be willing to dedicate it to the city as, even though you own it? And give them perpetual rights to use it as a drainage easement?
Yes.
Or utility easement?
If they needed to, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
I've lived there for, um, eleven years, sir. And this is my neighbors, John and Janice, that came along so that they could attest that they were okay with it. And my neighbors on both sides over here are with me as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other com- any other comments from the public, like to speak on this matter? Sir? Could you please come up to the microphone and state your name and?
Good evening, my name is Nicholas Main, I own the hundred and ninety-seven acres that abuts the property on the other side of the thirty-foot easement for the city, or the thirty-foot parcel that runs parallel with all of these properties on Christie Place. So me and my wife, Amy, just bought this property within the past year. All of these easements were in place when I looked at developing this ten acres in the corner. And my fear is that we just get into this, I just start talking to Strite Tech Engineering about developing it, drawing maps. I'm just talking to Engineering about size of water lines, pressures, coming off the tank, coming from Jagerson, all of these different things that are up in the air. And then I get a letter saying they want to abandon this. So I'm not sure at this point if it will affect my property or development or not. I, if it wouldn't affect me, I really wouldn't have a problem with it being vacated. But I can't say this week, with only a month to prepare, whether it's going to affect my development or not. And I'm already running into, it's already a task to develop this property that's been sitting here since God knows when. And I don't want anything else to cause monetary, um, expense.
Is your property on the lower part of that yellow?
Where it says area to be vacated?
Yeah.
Everything from this line this way.
Okay.
So that thirty-foot-
It's a larger area.
That thirty-foot parcel that goes all along there is in between my property and all of these property owners. So if I was to develop all this stuff down here where it says three thirty, twenty, zero, one, one?
Yeah.
That would be the ten acres that I would develop. And then the entrance to Jagerson comes down this way, so the Jagerson Road would come, continue up all along that easement. Currently, the land is sloped to, to go down towards a drainage parcel that the city owns right alongside Camelback. So it's not an issue right now, but every one of those neighbors that's complained since I've been in there has told me that all of the water that floods goes through their backyards exactly where the line is on the city-given, uh, piece of paper. It's drained through there for years, but it's not currently graded correctly. So when this parcel was deemed for a, um, a city parcel, that's where the development stopped. So there was no grading done. So I'm not against grading it to drain all the way down towards Camelback, which is a better drainage easement, and it, then it goes down to the wash. It would never should have gone through her backyard to begin with. It's, it's just a flood hazard, but I don't have permission to grade that thirty-foot, um, so it's, it's not really in my court.
So right now, is that a natural drain, or has it been a city, um?
Well, it's been there for so many years, somebody went in there and leveled all that off behind her house. And then another person had created like a swale, trying to divert it from those homes, because they probably had a problem. And trying to divert it back towards, like where that path is through that empty lot.
Right.
And it, it goes through there, and then it also goes down towards the bigger wash where it should go. But nobody has spent any time or money in there to create a, a necessary-
Correct.
Swale and ditch down to the main drain area. So, if you're saying if I'm in favor of abandoning it tonight, I'm not. Because I don't know what's going to be done with it and how it will affect my development. And I haven't even gotten clarification on, if I have to bring water in, would it come from, right from where the water tank is? Because that's a gravity feed tank, and it's a sixteen-inch line that comes off that tank. I don't know if I'd tap into it there and come across Camelback, or if I would come all the way over from Jagerson and then back up into it because of the gravity. So, I don't have the information to, uh, make a, to tell anybody to make a proper decision, because I'm not an engineer. And I'm not, that's, those aren't my two parcels, so I can't go in and grade them, but.
When do you think you might know?
Well, I just, I just met with Russ about doing this today, because I'm trying to figure out where to run our utilities and our, uh, watering just for the one house that I'm starting to build right now. So we're going to be going through Muck, uh, because I was planning to drill a well behind our house, which, our house is going to be nine hundred and fifty feet from the back line of their fence, this way, about nine hundred and fifty feet up. And we were just going to drill a well and run power to it. But with the, the building permits in City of Kingman, you have to have a water service. So we have fires to think about and other things. So if I have to run water lines in, I don't know whether they're going to rather, rather come off that six-inch line than her cul-de-sac? Or whether they'll come up from Jagerson off the eight-inch line? And it wasn't something that I planned on, I wasn't planning on developing that this month.
Six months from now?
No, I wasn't planning on doing it for a year or two. I was planning on starting down with Selma Potter and then working my way up, but it's going to be a couple of years. And I don't know, if they can, if they can determine whether they're going to need it in the future or not, that's, that's a different story. But I'm not, that's not my thing to, to determine what they're going to need to get me water and power.
How many, how many acres of that that you bought?
I bought the hundred and ninety-seven. It's the rest of the section that was Camelback was developed out of, and then there's some on the tank side, and then, um, Dr. Khan, I think, owns some, then, uh, and Pac.
So obviously down the road, um, you're planning on developing it?
Yeah.
And you know how many homes you're planning on putting in there?
Well, it's one acre minimum building sites and just, just that lower spot that's, that's buildable on either side of that wash would be like ten acres, so it'd probably be about seven or eight sites, including mine. And then there's at least seven or eight sites down, um, at the corner of, like Shane and Jagerson in there, and then over on Selma, there's probably four, five, six sites. So this, this part in particular, probably say ten max. And, and the first letter I got was like a month ago.
Okay.
And I, and I called and just said that I would be there, but I don't have, I don't have a whole lot to, to show.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I, I have a question for Greg.
Well, let them finish and we'll get it to, did you want to?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question for Greg, actually.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hey Greg, um, is that a natural waterway, do you know, or has that been put in by the city over time? And just, you don't have any history on that at all?
No, uh, it's, it's, it's a natural, it's a natural waterway, yeah. And, um, whatever drainage that flows through there now, we would expect that same amount of drainage would flow through there-
Even if he develops?
And if he develops, we do have a drainage ordinance in effect that would not allow him to increase that drainage that goes through there now.
Not allow him to increase it, but it is a natural drainage now?
Yeah.
So if we were to approve it, it, would it stay a natural drainage, or does the applicant have the right at that point to change and alter that to a level where it becomes changing the water shift in another direction? That's-
No.
You don't, okay.
No, so if he, if he subdivides, and his land is higher, so any drainage that comes off that land today would, would be allowed to continue to come off in the same manner that it does now. He wouldn't be allowed to concentrate it or channelize it, uh, or increase the flows in any way.
Okay. We had this huge flood not too long ago, and a lot of things got, uh, washed out in some areas of natural drainages and some that were altered and wiped out people's yards. And I, you just got to stop and look and go, okay, are we doing a disservice or what? And where is the natural water going if we have another downpour of rain like that? And how many homes in?
There was a lot of flooding in that area, too.
I know, and that's concerning.
She said she would maintain it as a drainage parcel, that she was not going to change its historic use, so.
Okay.
She did, but have to also take in consideration that he did his due diligence when he purchased the property. And he looked at what was there and what was owned by the city. And now I believe we need time, he needs time to review what this, how this can affect him. Um, because, uh, he did his due diligence as part of his inspection. And what was on by the city, how he could, um, develop the land, that's a big purchase. I believe that although I understand the intentions and goodwill of the, the owner, that this builder has purchased the property and done a lot of due diligence to see what he needed to, um, do to develop the property. And it's a huge, um, huge decision, financial burden, if, if he doesn't get the opportunity to review and, and see the effects, you know what I mean? And bring it all to us.
Well, Sylvia? If, if we were to approve it, we're not, all we're doing is giving the safeguards in the city's hands in case of whatever. So, the way I take it right now, that, that there is an easement, but, um, she just would like to maintain or landscape that easement, but, but for the city's sake, they would prefer that it stays an easement for precautionary measures in the future.
Yeah, I'd like to try to clarify that. So, uh, as you can see right here is a parcel that exists now, that parcel is not changing. That parcel is owned by the city.
Okay.
So it, that is different than the easement. Right now, this parcel is owned by the city as well.
Right.
And they're both designated for drainage and overhead utility purposes. Uh, the thing that would change is the ownership. The ownership would be that the property owner would now own this land, but there will be an easement still for the designation of drainage and overhead utility purposes. So the ownership is changing, and then the maintenance would be done by the property owner. But, being that it's an easement, then we could go in there if we needed to, to adjust.
So it's a win, it's a win-win.
I have a question.
There you are.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So if-
Listen to her.
If we do approve this and it turns, you know, over to the property owner, and she's going to maintain it, but she's going to maintain it at the level that it is draining now, right?
And it has been for-
And if we have development going on behind that drainage easement, and they need to divert that water, then she's kind of like grandfathered in that no more drainage can be directed into that area, is that right?
That's what I was understanding, not increasing the flow, correct?
You can't increase that flow.
When we get the building permit over here for the home, we will be looking at the drainage when we get that permit.
So nothing changes?
It does change. If his development goes in and he needs to divert water-
He can't.
From his development, it won't be allowed to go there.
He can't, he's not allowed to divert water.
For clarification, we're talking about a single house at this point.
He has to develop retention ponds on his property to the level that the flow is now, he can't change that. So the only thing changing would be the ownership. The use of the parcel is going to stay the same, there's always, there's going to be an easement there. The only difference is the city no longer owns it in private hands. And she's dedicating an easement, so.
So if I understand, that means then if, say, he, the builder did need to do a water line going through that space, technically that could still happen, because there's an easement.
And utilities, or no?
It's not a utility easement, it's a drainage, an overhead utility easement.
Not a, not a water.
So not affecting ground.
So affecting the, then.
And, and at this point to clarify, we're, um, looking at a single-family residence on that property, not a subdivision.
No, I hadn't-
Just to clarify.
Can I ask, can, can I ask, uh, Mr. Main? Um, because I'm not a contractor, I'm just curious as to how this could affect, uh, the situation.
As far as my purposes, I think it's too small to drain any of them through. There's a huge piece of land behind it that's flooded down through there for years, it, it shouldn't even be there. But I don't have the permission to grade everything down into the easement, or the drainage area that it should be going. When I, when I do develop that property, which will be a few years from now, it shouldn't go through her yard anyway. It should go to the huge wash that's along Camelback or retention along, there's even another parcel at Jagerson that's a huge chunk that could be a retention off of that, but it shouldn't go through there anyway, because on the other side of it is open street, which just floods the street. So it's a, it's an improbable situation for it to be going. I don't care about the drainage as, as far as not knowing about the water mains and the power. Power, I imagine, will come right off the back line, which is behind the yard, so it shouldn't be an issue. But not knowing anything about Muck yet and whether they're going to come through with water lines is my only concern. And the power isn't overhead anymore, it's usually underground in, in a decent development, so.
Right.
The City of Kingman has adapted, or adopting more underground, because it brings higher resale values.
Right.
So I, I'm not worried about the drainings through it, but the other things.
Thank you.
So just hang, hang on just a second. If I understand it correctly, this is not a utility easement. They can't put water lines through it.
I was under-
They can drain through it and they can use overhead utility, is what it says here. It's overhead utility easement and drainage parcel.
Okay, so it's only designated for overhead?
That's it.
Yes.
Can't be used as a utility easement.
Nothing, nothing affect you.
So it's not going to have an impact on what you want to do.
All right, well, I didn't know that.
Thank you. Is there any fur- is there any further questions, Sylvia, before we?
One more further clarification is that we did contact the utility companies to see if they had any plans for any overhead in that parcel, and they did not.
Thank you, Sylvia.
Thanks.
Okay.
I want to continue with the public since that's where we, we were at, please step up to the microphone and state your name.
Thank you. My name is Carol Collison, I own the property at five eight six Christie Plaza, which is a couple of outdoors down from this, um, parcel that's in question tonight. On that very narrow question, I just want to state as a property owner, I have no objection to this exchange of a little- to this exchange of a little over six thousand to the city for Renee taking over the wash and continuing to maintain it as she has been. The other questions that were raised by Mr. Main, I don't know the gentleman, but I am confused, I don't want to divert from the agenda of this meeting, but my understanding was that the property that he purchased was only zoned for a single-family dwelling. So I'm a little surprised tonight. Perhaps the zoning has changed, perhaps I misunderstood the zoning, but I was a little surprised tonight to hear that a couple of years from now he's looking at eight to ten units on that property. That's very different from my understanding as to how the property is zoned. If I'm mistaken, I would love to be given the facts. With that, my remarks are concluded. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further comments from the public? I see none closed, open it up to discussion.
I do have one question about liability is if that parcel becomes private property, wherein does the liability lie in case it's not maintained or if there is a large flood at some point in time that creates damage to other properties? The city would no longer be liable for it, is that correct?
I will try to answer that, but the property would be owned by the applicant.
And so she would shoulder the burden of liability?
Of the ownership of that property, but Greg, would we try to assist with that easement if that would occur?
So I think if it's abandoned, the city would retain a drainage easement, a public drainage easement, so there would likely be probably the same amount of liability that exists today for the city and perhaps a little more for the property that exists today.
Very good, thank you.
Did you have something, Vicki?
Well, I think Mr. Henry, my opinion, is correct, erring on the side of caution which is to retain the property and not vacate it. There was a lot of flooding that occurred up in that area.
There was.
Any further?
I have to agree with Vicki on this one.
I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to deny application AB 190005.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion, I have a second, any further discussion? See none, roll call vote, please.
Deny?
Deny.
Denied. Denied.
Approve.
Approve.
All righty, item number six, announcements by commission members. Limited to announcements, availability or attendance at conferences and seminars, requests for agenda items for future meetings and requests or reports from staff. No discussion on any of these items. Any such comments? I see none. I have, so I'll make a motion for adjournment, please.
I motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
I have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.